Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth's Council this 10th day of January 2023. I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We need confirmation of the agenda. Is there anything anyone wants us to add, change, delete? If not, then a motion to accept the agenda as presented, moved by Jeremy, seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Carried. Okay, if you have pecuniary interest, you can disclose that now or as we go along. We have seventeen items in our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on any of those items or want one pulled? No? Okay, so a motion to... Sorry. Items 5.1.1 to 5.117 is set out on the consent agenda for the January 10, 2023 regular meeting of council, be received for information, and at the minutes of December 20, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted. Moved by Jerry, seconded by Amanda, all in favor. Carried. We do have a delegation tonight, and we welcome members of our public library. We have Laura Hallahan and Mark Steffen, and if you just want to sit up at the desk, that would be great, and then the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and staff. It is wonderful to have this opportunity to present an overview of the library's organizational review that was conducted last winter. As you may be aware, the library underwent an organizational review last winter. The driving force behind the organizational review was to gain third-party input on the organization, especially in regards to the library's staffing structure. The organizational review allowed for a third party to analyze and assess the library's current processes, practices, services, staffing, and organization to identify opportunities for efficiency in service delivery and identify projected service and staffing needs. Kendra Roth, the CEO, will speak to the process, and both her and Chair Laura Hallahan will review the recommendations made from the organizational review.
I will give a quick overview of the process for the organizational review. It started in October 2021 and was completed in March of 2022. Pache and Associates, they were awarded the contract to do the review, and they evaluated library's current documents, which included employee structure, current job descriptions, service delivery, and operating processes. Their team then identified skills, abilities, training, mentoring needs for areas of responsibility and succession planning considerations that are appropriate to meet the current and emerging workload needs. Pache and Associates also then met with stakeholders and staff, including all the Perth's Public Library staff, township CAO, township treasurer, and all the board members for Perth's Public Library Board. In addition to meeting with the stakeholders, Pache and Associates also met with representatives from identified competitors to analyze different organization structures, policies, and procedures. They then presented a current state analysis to the board and staff before developing the final report, which outlined the future state recommendations. So the current state findings, those highlighted that the board has a strategic plan established, and that guides the board's work. The board ensures that the goals of the board align with those of township and council. The library's biggest challenges include funding, population demographics, and changing service demands. There's also a lack of alignment in roles and staffing hours for certain functions. The current staffing model impacts HR-related processes. So that was the current state finding. Then they did a final report, which showed future state recommendations. This report did allow for board, staff, and township staff to also give their input back to the report before it was finalized. Then there was five categories identified, and recommendations were made for each one. I will review the first three, and then Laura Hallahan will address the rest. The first category, corporate strategy, included the following recommendations: development of an operational plan, which the board hopes to complete this year; establishment of key performance indicators; and working closely with the finance team to plan the achievement of strategic goals. For the key performance indicators, myself and the board have begun implementing these, and it helps evaluate library services and programs. And not just by collecting data, but it involves us asking patrons how an event or a service impacts their life. The second category focused on services and programs. Recommendations included the implementation of additional digital services to meet the demands of library users; a review of the hours of operation, and this would be focusing on seeking input from the public; and the development of a learning center with partnerships between colleges, newcomer services, and third parties. The third category provided recommendations to optimize the library's efficiencies in relation to process and practices. These included updating existing and creating new standard operating procedures; regular scheduled team meetings to discuss tasks and project reporting; develop a funding strategy to determine projects and programs for funding; establish a memorandum of understanding between the township and the library, as you know, this was completed last year; continue collaborations with the township; and develop reimbursement procedure in consultation with the township; and training for new board members. So you'll see there's quite a few operational recommendations that staff can do, as well as recommendations at the board level for governance.
The fourth category made recommendations on the organizational structure itself. Firstly, transitioning the CEO position from a part-time to full-time would allow the CEO to effectively serve the population and continue management of the library, as well as focus on the high-level strategic priorities and advance the goals of the library's strategic plan. Secondly, it was recommended to combine a couple of the part-time positions and to introduce a full-time service coordinator role, and consider reassigning two of the existing library assistant positions with part-time roles to roles of outreach and programming coordinator and digital service coordinator. Splitting the roles would allow us to allocate staffing hours to roles that have service demands from the public. The next recommendation was to assess the reliance on part-time staffing arrangements, and finally, implement casual library assistants to cover call-ins and leaves. The final category reflected on staffing and employee development. Recommendations included updating existing job descriptions, determining required competencies for each position; conduct a salary survey to ensure the library is offering competitive wages; training for staff to meet changing service delivery demands; and exploring funding opportunities to insist with educational programs and staff development. There's been considerable work done already in a lot of these areas. The CEO worked with HR at the township to update job descriptions last year. They also regraded these job positions and brought them to the library board to approve the updated job descriptions and the grading of those positions. The board will continue to review and adapt the recommendations made, taking into account both the library and the township's strategic plans. As mentioned earlier, the board, the township, and library staff have been acting on recommendations made, such as introducing KPIs, updating reimbursement procedures, and formalizing an MOU. One of the top priorities identified by the board is addressing the current staffing structure and staffing plan. This includes assessing the CEO position, current staffing compensation, and we like to participate when the township does the next market review. Also prioritizing the introduction of new positions to deliver satisfactory services and programs and part-time positions. The board's goal and vision for the staffing plan is to gradually introduce new roles using current staffing levels while continuing to evaluate and assess staffing needs. Instead of implementing new positions right away, the board wishes to take steps to ensure they're compensating current staff appropriately while transitioning to a new employee structure that will retain qualified and trained employees. In 2023, the board is preparing to present service-level changes that include a full-time CEO, amending staff compensation based on the grading of revised job descriptions. In 2024 to '27, the board will begin the process of converting two of the four library assistants into two new positions. These positions would be outreach and programming coordinator and digital services coordinator. Beyond 2027, the board and CEO will continue to assess staffing levels to ensure that new positions are functional and improving efficiency in delivering library services.
What questions do you have for us?
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of council? No questions? Wow, I have a couple. The new positions, the digital service coordinator and the program coordinator, so is there a possibility to share that with someone, another library, do you think? Or is that someone that's going to be needed, like, full-time?
I can answer that one. It likely wouldn't be a full-time position. As far as sharing it with another Perth County library, is that what you're encouraging? I think PCIN would definitely be open to that conversation. West Perth Public Library would be in a similar situation as us, that they don't have... They currently have a program position, but it's kind of hard to find those staff members who are qualified for that role. So it'd be a great opportunity to look into a partnership for sharing that position, and maybe they would do programming at West Perth and Perth East or another PCIN library in Perth East. So that would definitely be something to look into in the future. Yeah.
No, I just wondered, because we're always trying to do that in other departments, share the employees if we can, so.
That might be easier to attract and retain somebody that was full-time as opposed to hiring two part-time positions in two different libraries?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then I guess the other one, like, we know that North Perth and West Perth have full-time CEOs. Did you compare the hours and, like, are our hours that were going to be open comparable to them? Is that how you're going to figure out the hours, or how are you going to figure out what hours you need the library open extra?
Moving the CEO to a full-time would not increase the hours of operation for the public library. So we wouldn't be increasing our weekly hours of operation open to the public.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I guess I assumed it would, but, okay.
We would, if council would like us to do that, we'd be happy to.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine, so. Okay, anyone else? No? Well, we thank you very much for coming, and we will look forward at the budget to go through this, so. Thanks again for coming tonight. Okay, we will move now. We have no public meetings or public hearings, and the first, next item is under planning. We have Sally joining us from the county planning office. So she's coming in on the Zoom. And there she is. Hi, Sally. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? How about now? Okay, great, thank you. So, good evening, board and... I'm just calling you the word now. Good evening, Mayor Eggers and members of council. It's great to be here and see you guys again, to have that opportunity. I'm gonna share my screen. I have a few slides for you tonight. Are you able to see the Perth County slideshow? Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to review some information around Bill 23 and Bill 109. So Bill 109 was earlier in 2022 and has some effect, or things coming into effect as of January 2023, so now. And then, of course, Bill 23 that came about in the fall and had royal assent in November. So I'm really going to focus tonight on some of the day-to-day impacts, the things that we're going to see on a more common basis and stick to those types of things. And then certainly, the report that I offered covers sort of a wider variety of items that, if you have questions about, we can discuss towards the end. So the first one is fee refunds. That's from Bill 109. It comes into effect January 1st. There was some talk of, from the province, of delaying the start of this. But when you look at the regulations, it's still in there, and there hasn't been any legislative change to cause that delay. So for any applications received on or after January 1st, 2023, and that's specifically zoning by law and site plan control applications, then we have essentially 90 days and 60 days respectively to arrive at a decision on those types of applications. And following those statutory timelines of 90 and 60 days, fees would be refunded on a graduated scale. And so what we've done in-house here is implement sort of a day counter to help us track that with the objective of not exceeding those dates, obviously. And what we want to do then is talk with local staff about, because both of these are fees collected at the lower tier, and so to be refunded by the lower tiers. So we want to make sure that finance staff are prepared in the event that that needs to occur. And then we would work together to give advance notice of those triggers, because in the system that we offer through our service agreement, the number of days that have passed is sort of more on our radar. So we would, we would track, we are tracking that, and that would help to identify that trigger should it be needed. Third-party appeals. So that has been removed for minor variance and consents. That's similar to subdivisions and condos, which was implemented a few years ago through Bill 108, actually. So what this means is that a neighbor's essentially wouldn't be able to appeal decisions on minor variances or consents, but the applicant could and other levels of government could. So what we're doing with that is to help people understand that when they engage in the public process. So there's still circulation on those applications. We still seek input from the public. They just don't have the same rights to appeal once a decision has been made. So similarly, for subdivision and condo, the change arriving from Bill 23 is that there's no requirement now for a public meeting on a subdivision application. But like I referred to in the appeals bullet just previous to this, we still circulate a notice of application to all the neighbors within a certain distance, and we still seek input from the public on those applications. They need to submit it in writing, and they can call in and talk to staff, have their questions answered, review studies, that type of thing. And then those comments that we receive would become part of our reporting system to the approval authority. And the other point I'd like to make about this is that our practice of coming around to the lower tiers to discuss and review subdivision applications before they go to county council for discussion and decision would still occur. That's still firmly part of our intended practice. And so that brings us to... Oh, I wanted to, before I leave this point. If there is, one of the things I'm still sort of weighing and considering... ...in framework concurrently, we can, we're having a public meeting about that development, essentially. And the public can participate in that, in that way, by attending a meeting. And they see the subdivision reviewed in that way. So the difference really for a subdivision that doesn't have an official plan amendment would be that the initiative really is on the public to come in and review it with staff or to ask for information from staff, and to not have that public forum necessarily to offer their comments within. So there's certainly pros and cons to this being removed and pros and cons to using some other means. And if we do go that way, then we would develop a policy so that it was clear, clearly communicated to the public how the county intends to have public forums. And one thing to consider, and something that CEO Givens has mentioned too, is that there is maybe a greater need now to, or a greater interest now in having the developer lead this piece, having them host something, and it would be something that we couldn't force necessarily, but something certainly that we could consider, and what would be the best timing for that during the process? So I think there's some things within this change to explore, and I will, I will continue to gather information and think it through and provide recommendation on this in the future. So that brings us to the scope of engagement for the Conservation Authority and Planning Act applications. Two items specifically. One is that there was, there was correspondence last week from the Minister of Natural Resources and Forest that the Conservation Authority's scope with respect to planning applications is very clearly natural hazards and natural hazards alone. So erosion and flooding risks, and so that will be their, the limit to their jurisdiction on planning applications. What's unclear, I think, still is there is how these changes in the legislation will affect their Section 28 permitting when a planning application is also involved and there is approvals given under the Planning Act. So there is language in the changes from this bill around that, but it lacks a bit of detail for us to fully understand how that's meant to be implemented, and it will be fleshed out in the regulations that come under the Conservation Authority Act, which we're still reading. And then the, another one on this slide is the lapsed subdivision. So this is for subdivisions that have lapsed within the last five years. There's an opportunity now or a window for folks owning those properties to come forward and say, "I'd like you to reconsider reinstating this subdivision." So yes, we had draft approval, and yes, it lapsed, as in, we didn't build the subdivision or we didn't fulfill our conditions, but we would like to sort of reinvigorate it. And in these cases, there's been a couple people sort of kicking tires on this. What I've advised is that they need to put their best foot forward. They need to really make a formal request in terms of a letter, and they need to demonstrate to council how their subdivision continues or does meet sort of the current development standards and needs of the local municipalities. Things like stormwater management and servicing, things of that nature that really are imperative. So the onus is really on landowners to come forward and then demonstrate how their subdivision is still warrants warrants another, another chance. Okay, that brings us to a couple of items that I think require a little bit more detail. The first one is additional residential units. So these changes in Bill 23 are now requiring every municipality to allow up to three residential units per lot, one primary dwelling, and then the possibility for an accessory unit within that primary dwelling and a second accessory unit in a, in a, in a outbuilding or accessory building. So that is effective immediately. And what that means is that regardless of whether or not we've updated our zoning or official plan policies to align with this, a permit, a building permit for that couldn't be denied. And the things that planners and building officials right now are trying to manage or compensate for, I guess would be another way to put it, is that one of the requirements is that you, as a municipality, we can't force them to have more than one additional parking space per unit. And so that's going to work okay on some sites and not on others. So the question is, what mechanisms do we use to, to figure this out and enforce it in some way that's going to really result in the functionality of an individual site? So what, what happened earlier today was we did have a workshop with building officials, planning and building officials throughout the county, and we also had attendance from the city of Stratford, and we worked together to really identify what are the questions that these changes leave us with? What are the challenges that there are, that they're going to result in? And how can we... address those through other mechanisms? And really the focus of our meeting or the tone of our workshop today was let's let's not spend energy trying to figure out like how to circumvent this stuff. Let's figure out what mechanisms do we have that we can use, that we can put in place to, and really at the end of the day, ensure that sites with additional residential units are quite functional and working in concert with neighboring properties. And the same focus, the same I would say intention, also we use to discuss site plan control today. So this is the second piece that requires a little more detail. So on the screen right now is a list of things that site plan control is used to regulate. And again, the purpose of site plan control and regulating these things is to ensure that the site functions really well and that it is compatible with neighboring uses. So the changes arising from Bill 23 are that site plan control no longer applies to residential developments of 10 or less units. So we had our previously exempted residential units of two or less. So what we're really talking about is developments where there is anywhere from two to 10 residential units proposed on a site. And how will we then ensure that, that these things that we used to do under site plan control are are addressed? And then the other thing that this bill changes is that regardless of the type of use, so whether it's residential or commercial or industrial, what have you, that we're no longer able to regulate architecture and landscaping external to the building. And sometimes that's really important when it comes to compatibility in particular. So this one is, I mean, both of these are a little bit frustrating because we had just written and we're working on intensification guidelines, for instance, for residential uses. And the whole premise there is that design really does help to achieve compatibility and to help with the intensification of some of our service settlement areas in a way that's pleasant and, and fits into the community. So these are the two changes that we are faced with. And as I said, we met earlier today to try and look at how will we, how will we achieve these things or the majority of these things using other mechanisms? To help ensure the functionality of sites and compatibility with neighboring sites. So what I have highlighted for you here is some of the things that we can sort of shift to zoning bylaw. The building code has some means of capturing and potentially implementing or beefing up a building bylaw. So in our group discussion today, we went through this list and, and really tried to nail down what do we already have a tool that exists for or for landscaping or planting strips, for instance, like we can address those kinds of things in a zoning bylaw, but we should go back and pull out those provisions and definitions and make sure that they are suited for this purpose. Now the site plan is not going to be there. And then there is a few things that we really felt we needed to explore and research and figure out if there's another means or some way that we can address. And so I'm going to show you what they are with these red highlights. So stormwater management items, landscaping, planting, strips and fencing. Again, I, I think we can go to the zoning bylaw, but we need to do a bit of thinking and, and really make sure that we've covered as many bases as possible in the zoning bylaw for those things. Outdoor lighting, I think, will be a challenge. And parking to some degree, we can deal with through zoning. So we're going to do our best there to come up with additional provisions or changes to the existing provisions and definitions to make sure that's covered. Things like accessibility, pedestrian access, we can address some of those things with subdivision. The challenge is certainly in existing neighborhoods and older neighborhoods. So redevelopment projects and new greenfield developments are going to be easier to manage, certainly than existing sites or infills, those are going to be, require some of these areas in green and areas in the red ovals to really be addressed. So what we've done as a group is, is sort of divvied up the work here and we've agreed to meet back in a couple of weeks to discuss the potential solutions and how they might work here in Perth County for each of the lower tiers. I added a bit to the slide as well about the architecture and landscaping. There are a few exemptions with respect to that. So if there is a health and safety or accessibility reason or sustainable design, I'm going to give you a couple of examples on these things. One would be example given at our workshop today was the type of materials used on the outside of a building. And there being casework or case studies in the past of them being sort of fire accelerants or an issue or concern of safety. And if, and for those, we can in that case, perhaps regulate some architectural details through these exemptions. Accessibility, certainly that's a little more self-explanatory. Sustainable design, I think, and the group just discussed today, like we may need some policies around sustainability, sustainable design or green design that we could use to rely on or justify an exemption that we wanted to deal with through site plan control. So that gives you a little bit more detail on the continued work that we're doing on, on site plan control and additional residential units specifically. And how we're working with building officials, because I think really what, what a lot of this boils down to is that planning mechanisms or planning tools are sort of, are being removed. And what that does is it shifts some of, it shifts the responsibility or the focus or the issues, the resulting issues perhaps onto building officials and enforcement staff. So as a group today, we discussed like let's use our energy to focus on collectively figuring out how to use these changes in our communities and, and, and in doing so, well, maybe, you know, we may very well see an increase in affordable housing units and increase in density. And those are things that we were striving for. So there's potentially some good, some really good outcomes here. And we really need to use our energy to focus on the tools and mechanisms and means by which we can achieve them in our rural municipalities. And as I said, I think it's important that as this goes on, that we monitor the tool that it may take on building departments or on by law enforcement and and try to look for ways to revisit possible tools if necessary, like we may have to tweak things as we go along here. As different patterns arise through these changes. And then finally, top of mind for me in particular, I mean, the other planet, the planners in our team and the building officials are really focused on some of the site plan stuff and, and the official plan is really top of mind for me because I believe out of these changes that the next step is going to be changes to the provincial policy statement. And I think that will translate into edits or rewriting of sections that we've worked really hard to develop to date for the draft OP. So the question in my mind is when are we going to see those changes and how will they what will the timelines look like in comparison to the plans that we have this year for reviewing the draft of the OP with committees and then going to public consultation? So we'll see, time will tell on that. And that's the end of my slides for you all. I'm going to stop sharing so I can see you a little better. And I'm willing to, or able certainly to take any questions that you may have.
Thanks Sally. Any questions of the report, Amanda?
Two questions. Just circling back on, I think it was like the first slide, you talked about the scope of conservation authorities. So they can no longer comment on minor variances. But I understand that there is one conservation authority in our watershed that is still attempting to do that and is using a 500-year-old flood plan map. I just wanted to see if, if you have heard, you know, got that feedback on, on your end, on the planning end. And if you know which conservation authority I'm referring to.
I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you actually, but I think the question was specific to minor variances. And conservation authority commenting on those. I got that correct?
Now Sally?
Yeah, much better. Thanks.
Yes?
Yep, much better.
So my question was regarding, given the, the provinces limiting the scope of, of conservation authorities to their core mandate, they're no longer able to comment on minor variances, correct?
They can comment on flood and erosion hazards. They cannot comment on any other subject area like natural heritage, for instance.
So my understanding is we have a conservation authority in our watershed that is still attempting to make comments on things that are outside of this new scope outlined by the province. Has that been brought to your attention?
Well, I haven't seen any letters like that, but if they exist, we would take their hazard comments and run with those.
Okay.
I mean, we just simply follow the legislation as written. So they can write a letter with many other things in it and the piece that we're obliged to follow is the hazard comments.
So I guess my question is, if there is pushback from the, any of the conservation authorities in our watershed, it wouldn't hold up a process? Because you would just strictly look at what their, what the mandate that the province has outlined, correct?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any reason or cause to hold something up for subject matter other than hazards.
Okay, I'll, I can, I will maybe touch base with you offline on, on a situation that was sort of brought to, to my attention on a conservation authority that's in our, our watershed that it sounds like it's something that is outside of the new scope that's been outlined. So I just wanted to chat briefly on that. And the second point is, it wasn't covered in the presentation and I I don't know if you can speak to it, but I understand like there's is there new guidance on a push for looking at brownfield sites to encourage, you know, looking at those sites for, for housing? My understanding that that is the case and if so, is there any lands within the township of Perth East that would be sort of putting you on the spot? So we can certainly circle back on that, but just didn't know if you could speak to brownfield sites specifically as it relates to looking at innovative ways for, for housing.
Well, I think the opportunity to redevelop a brownfield site has always existed and it's just challenging and cost cost prohibitive in some cases, but there's mechanisms and, and tools and regulation in place to explore that. And I don't think that has changed. What will be interesting is whether or not the PPS and any changes to that provide any more encouragement in that way, or whether or not there is some change under a different act that maybe incentivizes that in some way. Because as I said, I think the mechanisms exist for that to occur. It's just very time-consuming and cost-heavy. But I think I mean, I've kind of been looking for somebody to do some of that. So I don't think that there's any change on that.
Understood that there was, but I could be, could be mistaken.
Well, if you can find, if there's a specific reference, I'd be happy to look into it for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, Jerry?
Yeah, we all realize there's been a number of municipalities, cities that have sent letters in, you know, with the asking for changes up to I, I think your comments, Sally, that hey, let's, let's deal, let's work with it. Let's work with what we have. The, the chance that the province is going to do anything is probably slim. I like the point about, so for, for the public meeting, suggested that the developer hold the public meeting. So I really like that. What, and is that something we can put in this policy? And the second part of it is when do you think that, you know, the report will come to council about the, the public meeting process?
Okay, so two questions there. One, can we put into policy that it's the developer's responsibility to hold some type of information session or open house? At this point, I don't think we can regulate that. The whole point of removing public meetings from the Planning Act was that that's no longer an extra step for subdivision approval. Now, what we can possibly regulate is doing it in-house still. So, you know, we would go above and beyond the Planning Act, which doesn't require it, but that doesn't mean that we can't do it. So we, why, what we're trying to do is really evaluate what can, what can be gained by continuing to do it? And if we're going to, what parameters will we put to it? Would it look just like it did before these changes? Or would there be some other means or ways that we could sort of reinvent that process? And, and so I do think it's going to take me a little bit of time to explore that properly. I have put my mind to like, what applications do we have in the, in the queue right now that this will affect? There is two subdivisions that come to mind that are relatively new. Both in Perth East, in fact, that we will be having public meetings for the official plan amendments that are associated with those and then subsequently zoning. So there will be public meeting components to those developments and if someone chose to come and speak at the official plan, public meeting, for instance, we wouldn't refuse them from making a comment, like they would make a comment potentially on a street layout or something that we couldn't ignore. But at the same time, there is nothing stopping members of the public subdivision and submitting their comments to us and they would be they would be fully reviewed. We would con, like if they, if we just received them out of the blue, we would just get in touch with them and try to go through them and just as we do on consent applications right now, we circulate the application. We look for reasons from the public that we need to engage further with them. And when we get comments on us, on a consent, a sub just simply get back to them and say, okay, tell me more about your concerns. How can, and then we work with the developer to try and resolve those things. So that at the point that we're making any recommendation to council, we can say these concerns were raised. The developer did X, we did Y, these ones were resolved, these ones are outstanding. Because we couldn't come to any resolve on them and these are the things that we tried. So that process still exists for a subdivision. And so it's very true that there's still a public engagement process. What would be missing would be a public forum where someone could come hear what the planner is saying and then immediately following that comment to the planning authority on what they think about this application. So it requires a little more work on their part to to learn about this subdivision and then submit their comments. So I think there's a lot there to process and to figure out before we look for ways to I, I'm, I don't think that having a public meeting or continuing to have them through some other policy, it's not circumventing the changes in Bill 23. It's just before we take that step, we want to be certain that going above and beyond is what we need to do here.
Okay, other questions, Hugh?
Uh, yeah, Sally, on page one oh nine of your report, there says there's a removal of a two-year moratorium on OPAs for new official plans owning bylaws and minor variances, so have we been operating under that for the last two years?
Well, we don't have a new official plan yet, um, but I, one of the things that was in place up until this change was that, I'm going to give you a hypothetical, um, so say we have a new OP uh, next month. Um, then, the Planning Act would say that no one can apply for an official plan amendment to that new plan for two years unless uh, county council passed a resolution that they would allow it. And now, the Planning Act just removes that activity entirely and just says, uh, anyone can apply for an official plan amendment at any point.
Okay, Andrew?
Uh, thank you, Mary, it's uh, Deputy Mayor McDermott stole one of my questions, so I only have two now. And, and nothing, nothing too earth shattering or, or detailed needed. Is it, and all, I've, I've looked through all the documents, starting on one oh eight, it looks like a lot of work, I'm glad you guys are having time to get to it. Is there been any um, number thrown out uh, from the province or any indication of you shall build five hundred homes or three hundred homes or multi-year mixed residential number? Is there, is there a quota that they're throwing out for rural municipalities to do any, any home building other than normal?
Not that I've seen. Um, there is a requirement though that in our official plan, we set targets um, for intensification, targets for density, um, and affordable and attainable units. Our current OP doesn't have strong targets, um, or hard uh, like around density, it, it, it has sort of density suggestions for the different, yeah, rather than uh, like a hard line whereby, you know, if you're reviewing a subdivision, you could say, well, this proposal doesn't meet our requirement for density in a medium density zone. So no, uh, that's a reason not to approve it, or to send them back to like retry, try again. Um, where, and so that's why we, in the new official plan, are, are writing it with more firm language. And that is a requirement of the PPS now too, that you do it that way.
Thanks for clarifying that, there's kind of, word would be panic or misinformation, but there seems to be some out there. The second thing I have is um, boundary expansion. No, it kind of was touched on, on the, the two-year uh, moratorium, and then on uh, page one forty-eight, uh, that's all I have for our P thing in the, in the, the document from the uh, province that was part of your presentation. Residential land supply, it's a settlement area boundary expansions, it just kind of gives a, a word salad of what they're thinking, so through our official plan and anything, has there been any changes to that? Is it still only during official plan review period? That you can do expansion, I don't know if that's a regular OPA, or, or how does that work? Has there been changes to that?
The, the comprehensive review requirements um, have not changed as a result of Bill twenty-three. So, in order to expand a boundary, you first need to justify your land needs based on your growth projections and your current inventory. Uh, that's the same as it was before, uh, and that's the, those are the activities that we're going through right now in order to determine the proposed growth areas in the new official plan. Um, and also the PPS directs that those growth areas be um, adjacent to service settlement boundaries and and so, um, what will any changes to the new, to the PPS say? I have no idea yet. I'm looking at the same, as you say, word salad as you are.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the implementation update report, legislative changes of Bill one oh nine and Bill twenty-three, report prepared by the Perth County Manager of Planning Services, dated January ten, twenty twenty-three, for information. Moved by Hugh, seconded by Amanda. Comment or questions? All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Sally.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're going to move to the CAO, and we have the Shakespeare Water EA. Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Eg, Mayor Eggers. Uh, yeah, the report is in front of council as it relates to kind of follow-up piece and um, the intent to move forward as it relates to preferred alternative selection uh, for the Shakespeare water. Um, so the report, uh, we tried to uh, capture information um, and provide the feedback that was received from the uh, open house that was hosted in Shakespeare. Um, as well, we've tried to move forward as it relates to the financial implications associated with each of the preferred options that have been presented to council. Really, um, the report, the intent is to hopefully convey that depending upon the option selection, it creates a different base as it relates to who the benefiting property owners will be. So basically, starting at, you know, the two hundred and forty-eight number, which is basically a combination of the hundred and sixty existing connected uh, properties and the eighty-eight that still exist within the uh, existing capacity uh, of the water system in Shakespeare, and then moving up to the four thirty-six, which would be able to be serviced if um, if there was any type of expansion um, as it relates to reservoir uh, at one, at the site itself. So, creating that additional capacity allows for more benefiting customers, which allows for more breakdown of the costs amongst all of those four thirty-six as opposed to it being limited to the two forty-eight. So I recognize there's a lot of numbers as it relates to, in particular, the um, third attachment to the report. We also wanted to try to uh, provide a little bit of guidance to council around the funding options that exist to um, also reduce the impact of the project um, on any of the benefiting property owners. The, the water reserve funds is an option, we provided kind of the background as it relates to what the basis of that reserve fund is. Uh, the current balance is about one point four or five million. Uh, the idea of potentially an infrastructure loan or debenture, uh, allowing us to um, expand the length of the term around collection of those costs to match the loan period in, in potential. Given that the assets that we're building is going to have a long lifespan, uh, I don't think it's inappropriate to consider uh, debenturing or a loan for portions of the costs. Um, obviously, the development charges, if council chooses one of the options that allows for potential growth beyond that one sixty and eighty-eight number, it would open up the idea that the developers or those properties that are part of that development would be um, they would become benefiting property owners and that they would pay those costs around that expansion. Those expansion costs would not have any impact on the current uh, people that are connected to the system or those that aren't connected to the system, it would be just those that come in the future, after the fact, that connect, they would be benefiting, and then they would pay those costs at that point. So, that was the intent of kind of the overview of the report. Um, I'll maybe get Matt to scroll um, down to the third attachment and try to uh, walk through that to a certain degree. So yeah, the upper portion really is just kind of to, to encapsulate the overall funding implications. Um, so the project estimate um, for treatment is that one point nine seven five number. We've got approved funding of about one point four or five, uh, that creates a funding gap there. Um, within that approved funding, we have a portion to pay in there, that's that three eighty-six number, so really the co, current treatment costs, net of the grant costs are that nine eleven number. Um, so that's, that's kind of the starting point as it relates to trying to capture costs. The box to the right of that one, uh, you see the cost of treatment, that nine eleven number. We've estimated the cost for growth, so that would be uh, going to one of the other options, uh, two C or two D um, would be at that three eighty-five piece, and then the cost for fire, if, depending upon the sizing of the reservoir and the pumps, that either becomes that two fifty number or that four ninety number on option two D. So the, the next table, I, I think is the key one, and, and maybe, maybe people will dispute, but it's trying to allocate those costs, and this, this does not reflect us as a council or as a staff or as a Perth East tapping into reserve funds, um, debenturing. This is just kind of the total cost as it relates to the property. So the hundred and sixty current uh, properties, because we're limiting it just to that one sixty and eighty-eight and option two A, with the costs associated with those properties would be three, just over thirty-six hundred. Moving over to two B because we're creating some more capacity, that would be that two thousand number. Two C is that twenty-four fifty-nine, and again, two D goes up to the twenty-eight forty-four, that's for the existing one sixty connected. The eighty-eight is the existing capacity within the water system, and again, their cost would be aligned with that one sixty. And choosing one of the options around two B, that one eighty-eight are future uh, connections that are eligible to connect because we choose to um, allow for some growth within the system and two B, two C or two D, and their costs are uh, more, they get the benefit of treatment, but they are solely responsible for the growth costs. So they're at uh, forty-one, forty-five, and forty-eight hundred. And then the private well and settlement areas, and this is uh, based on a very broad assumption right now that council would decide that if they choose to go with two C or two D, that they would allocate the cost around the fire piece to those property, all the properties within the settlement boundary. That's a very broad assumption right now, I think there's lots of options that council might consider whether or not they wanted to venture that, whether they not, they want to reflect that as a fire capital budget piece to be captured over a five-year period as an example, or whether they want to look at fire capital reserves to offset some of those costs. I think those are, those are things that are still up in the air in terms of consideration. So, that's the, kind of the table to try and give the indications around the current cost breakdown and what the impacts would be on the different connection types that exist within Shakespeare.
Okay, questions? Jeremy?
Yeah, Mike, on the bottom of P E one sixty-six, I'm fairly certain I asked a question at a prior meeting about dipping into capital reserve for the water, um, and I think the answer was that we couldn't do that, but what I'm seeing here is Shakespeare is paying eighteen to nineteen, just to understand it correctly, Shakespeare is paying eighteen to nineteen percent into the capital for water, so reasonably we would take that much out. We could take more out, we could take less out, we could take none out, but that's approximately what's going in there because it's all part of one fund with Milverton and Shakespeare together. So we could use some of the reserve, but only for current connections and not for new connections?
That would be absolutely my recommendation for council is that the current reserve is based on funds that we are collecting for the current connections, so that, any dollars that we would use from that should benefit those current connections. And yeah, the, I did, that's why I included that portion right from our reserve policy in the, the background to the report as it relates to the utilization. There is discretion around that, but it certainly would be my reckon, recommendation that if we're going to use water reserves, that we would look at eighteen percent of that basically hu, one point four million and say that's, yeah, that could be part of this project for the benefiting customers, the existing ones, that one sixty. That, sure.
Okay, Hugh?
Uh, yeah, I noticed that uh, there was a comment there that uh, the sheets that they got in uh, Shakespeare that they would be destroyed, be destroyed. But um, being as this is an EA and stuff like that, do you not have to keep all that stuff?
Uh, the short answer is no, based on my conversations with the project engineers.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Amanda?
Um, not captured here, uh, so I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, Mike, but uh, just to preface this by saying it's um, this is a big issue and I know it's really um, you know, contentious. Um, some of the comments that, that have been discussed about, and I did receive one call, uh, even though this is not in my ward area, um, from private well owners. And so, I really want to make sure that it's crystal clear. Um, I think people are worried about um, being forced to hook up to municipal system. And so how do we, like, so there's that, the municipal, like the private well owners, how do we treat them? Um, and, and the other thing is, um, I think, you know, the, the common question that people want to know is how much do they have to pay per household to hook up? Um, because I think I'm just sensitive with um, you know, balancing the needs of, you know, uh, trying to um, you know, address the core issue while planning ahead, while also being sensitive to the fact that um, you know, people are really struggling right now, and I think we need to be very um, sensitive to uh, to that, and so uh, you know, whatever decision we come up with as a council, we have to be able to sell and justify that, and so I, I don't know if you can speak to the well ownership uh, piece and, and how we are going to be handling that, um, I just really want to be crystal clear on, on that and have some sort of uh, this, you know, that I can point to that, hey, this is what, what, what we're doing, and it's in, it's in writing for, for people, um, I just, I, I don't know if that's, I know it's sort of separate to this, but it's also uh, a big issue that's been talked about.
Um, yeah, thanks, Council brought, I, I'm working under the, the assumption and the direction of council that there's no intentions of forcing people who are connected to wells uh, to connect to the water system, that they want to remain on private wells, that's their right, and that's been the direction I've been given since I got here. Um, and I, I have no intentions of straying from that. Um, I think if council wants us to send written notice to the two hundred and forty-eight private wells in um, in Shakespeare indicating that we're, there's no requirement to connect to the system, I, I don't have strong feelings about not doing that, um, because that's been the direction I've been working under since I got here. Yeah, if, if others are feeling different about that around this horseshoe, that would be news to me, because I think that's what we've all kind of been working uh, towards, that, yeah, there's no intention to force the people who are on private wells to connect to the water system. The one thing I would say about that is that creating capacity has the potential, and I'm not, I'm not an advocate, I'm not, I, I'm just won, I'm just trying to make the case and provide information. There are circumstances where someone on a private well may want to connect, and I don't think we should say they can't. So, um, if we don't, uh, we have to balance that at some point too, and there are circumstances that may happen in the future where ten years down the road, somebody may want to commit, connect to the municipal water system, and if we don't have capacity, then, then we're going to have to create capacity in that circumstance, potentially. I'm, I don't have a crystal ball, and none of us do, and I understand that. But, the short answer is, I have no intention, and I don't believe council has any intention of forcing people on private wells to connect to the municipal water system.
I think, I think what I'm more so getting at is um, you know, I don't want to, you know, you know, in four years' time, there might be a different council around this chamber, okay, and so I think, you know, what, you know, we're operating under certain assumptions today, you know, sending out a notice is, you know, today, you know what I mean? It's not, you know, um, six years from now or whatever, so what, could it be an emotion, like, could it be, like, how can we give them reassurance that we're not going to compel them to, to do it, but there's certainly the option if they voluntarily want to, to, to hook up. Like what mechanism, what could we do as a council today, potentially, to, to address that issue from the public? What would you recommend?
So, it, it's a fair question, it's me- So uh, it's a fair question, it's maybe not a fair answer, because you as a council today, as you've indicated, you may not be here in four years, and circumstances may change that none of us are aware of around that. Passing a motion today saying that y- yes, we have no intentions of connecting, I think is fair, you could do that, but for us, myself included, any of us, to suggest that we know what may happen ten, fifteen years from now and suggest to any property owner that we have the authority to say circumstances won't change, I, I think is, I think it's misleading. I think we can pass a resolution as a council, if you choose that, to say that we have no intentions during this term of council or at any term that we are part of to force connection on, from private wells, but to say that, that's in perpetuity, I, I don't think we can, I don't think we have the legal right to actually say that, to be honest. A bylaw could be passed, a bylaw could be rescinded by a future council, a resolution could be reconsidered by a future council. I, I don't know what the mechanism would look like, to be honest, Councilor Broadhagen.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, Andrew?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor Aggins. So I guess uh, I appreciate the comments, so far, they're remarkably in tune with the feeling on the ground in, in the village of Shakespeare. I guess just the four thirty-six number uh CO givens, um, it kind of looks like that includes all the well owners, um, just optically. I think uh, I've asked about to pass a bylaw, or sorry, yeah, zoning bylaw or whatever, to uh protect this and, and get rid of this item. I think it's probably wise, no matter what we do tonight, that that also be added. It's not so much of a question, but I, I was gonna ask that question anyway, so I'll ask it again. So the future growth is mentioned on page one fifty-six. Now, when we entered this, you know, we heard from the consultants and through both EA's, I actually did a second EA because it's not about growth, but now we're openly saying, and I'm glad we're getting to that point where we're openly saying it's about growth. So um, I'm concerned we need to separate this and he'll knows from my questions to planning staff about uh boundary expansion. So I guess my question is, is will any items on this list, any selection tonight, and I'm not advocating for any or, or anything farther than that, will any of those affect the current OPA intake for settlement uh boundary expansion with especially those four thirty-six uh capacity numbers?
I think it would be fair to say, um, I'm going out a little bit on a limb here, Councilor McAlpine, that if council chooses not to acknowledge the four thirty-eights, that the idea of entry, any boundary expansion in Shakespeare will end in this um iteration of the official plan.
Okay, other questions? Amanda?
Just one more question, and I apologize, Mike. I just, again, just so I'm crystal clear, this is a big decision, so looking at the chart, um, so two A, basically, if we went with two A, um hypothetically, there would be no opportunity for a later date for us to expand.
I appreciate the question because it, it helps me clarify my last comment, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to do this. What I would, I wanna, yeah, I want to capture this appropriately. It would make the idea of boundary expansion more challenging, not impossible, and it will not change the province's opinion that growth should occur in areas that are serviced. It will not change that. It may increase the costs associated with allowing for growth in Shakespeare if it is forced upon us in one shape or form, but it would res- it would make it more challenging because we wouldn't have that capacity. So when I say it would end it, that's, that's overstepping my statement. What I'm saying is it would make it more challenging for a boundary expansion. I believe, and this is my belief, and just based on what I'm seeing, you guys are seeing the same thing that I am seeing. The province expects all of us, rural, urban, small, large, to play a role in the housing shortfall that exists in this province. Whether we agree with that or not is not, I'm not here to debate that with anyone. It's an expectation. It's clear what they're doing with the bills that they're passing, Bill twenty-three and Bill one oh nine are all about addressing, getting one point five million houses built in the next ten years. What mechanisms they will continue to provide or promote or enforce on municipalities, I don't know that, but it will not change the expectation that they, I believe that they have on all of us that we're gonna play a part in addressing the housing shortfall.
Okay, I have a question on the chart, when we're on the chart, and then I'll come back to you, Andrew. Just so clarification here, on two A, it shows a potential of two hundred and forty-eight connections, and it says cost per connection is three thousand six seventy-four fifty-four. That's per house, is that correct?
That's per connection.
Per connection, but only those hundred and sixty and the eighty-eight.
Correct.
If I go down the chart to scenario four, two C, it says three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. That's per house, correct? But that's current owners, all the well owners, and the future connections, but they only pay three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Am I reading this correctly?
Correct, if the, the option to allow for um capacity for fire suppression was selected, correct?
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm reading the, the chart correctly.
And, and yeah, to that point, that's assuming that we don't look at other funding avenues associated with that part of the project, which I believe that we should. It's just we haven't got there yet because we haven't made the decision around the preferred alternative.
Okay, questions? Jeremy? Oh, Andrew, I'll go, Andrew go first, and then Jeremy.
No, thank you, thank you, Mayor Aggins. So I, I guess, I guess another question that I'm getting, and, and um, Councilor Broadhagen kind of opened the door for that one, was um, you can see the probable cost here, it goes up and up and up to three million uh, uh CO givens. Um, so that'll be existing users, some future users. Would it be not good because it looks like it, we, we know this is now expandable two A, for example, and it has that two forty-eight number? Um, and yeah, if it will constrict the developer, development, then maybe that will get the developer to, to pay for all this growth instead of the taxpayer and the local residents. So that, that strategy seems to be good for everybody, and those, all that cost will be uh put into the, into the new homes as any other, you know, subdivision type uh items go, right? And they can connect to whatever system. Um, I think there's types near everywhere where there would be connection, so that would be, would that be possible, that we, we, we allow this to be paid for? Um, all the gross, do you actually be paid for by gross? Because that's been the mantra as long as I've been here, is gross pays for growth, you know? So it should be fully, though.
I, I'm a hundred percent in agreement that growth pays for growth, and that's why you look at two B and two C and two D, the, the figures associated with growth are significantly more than the existing um properties that can be serviced. And, and that, that was, that was our focus, and when we're going through the costs, is to make sure that growth is not only paying for the benefit of the treatment, but they're paying for the growth part of it too. So that's why when you look at that one eighty-eight number in two B, two C, two D, they're paying a significantly larger amount um than the existing connected and the future connections that exist within the current capacity. But, but the, the concept absolutely, and to your initial point, Councilor McAlpine, yeah, moving to the alternate site, the site has, the site has capacity itself from a, a land standpoint, and I think what you're suggesting is, hey, in the future, if ten years down the road, Joe rolls into town, he wants to build four hundred homes, then Joe is building the new capacity on that site. It's a different way to look at it, absolutely.
It, yeah, if we've got the potential there, but the appropriate person's gonna pay for it. So just, I think you briefly spoke to it, and if I may, just another quick question. So um, say the, the difference goes up and up in, in the total project cost, you know, say T, two C got selected, um, or two B, so that's gonna be built, that two point six million, hopefully, hoping the, the economy doesn't jack that through the roof in the next two weeks, um, with the recession coming. But um, so who, who's gonna take care of that carrying costs for all that money until Joe Blow comes along and wants to? I imagine there's probably people listening to this meeting right now waiting to see what, what's gonna happen so they can develop, but um, um, who's gonna, is the taxpayer gonna be on the hook for those carrying costs, or will that be factored into the, added to the, the connection fee?
My intention, the carrying costs associated with the, the growth portion would stay with the growth. We're not, we're not, we're trying to absolutely look at ways to limit the financial impact on the existing connections and the eighty-eight that exist within the capacity. So any costs associated with um the debenturing uh associated, if that was the route we decided to go, which would be one of my recommendations, that in particular, the growth portion would be debentured, we would either find a way to negotiate recouping all those costs with the developer or amend our development charges, so it allows us to capture both the principal and the interest associated with that. We really, and I think the rest of the staff will agree, the focus when, you know, I forced them to sit down with me and go over this is, we're trying to make sure that growth pays for the growth portion, if we're gonna go that route. Uh, that's, it, that's, makes the most sense, we're supportive of that, nobody has tried to stray that, we're not, we're trying to limit the impact as much as we possibly can on the existing connections and the connections that ex- that we can service without any expansion. And by creating a larger number, economies of scale are economies of scale, um, that helps, but also focusing the costs on those growth connections helps as well. I, I'm not disputing the costs go up depending upon the different scenarios, Councilor McAlpine, it's, yeah, that's true.
Sorry, just one more follow-up, I apologize. So Bill twenty-three is gonna affect development charges for intensified, I don't know what the right word is, so we had spoke, I heard briefly in, in the conversation, um, that, that we would use development charges to pay for some of this, I don't think we can really, because nobody's gonna build. It's just even very, we're not gonna be building single-family homes that not too many people are, there may be, but I doubt it. So we're not gonna get those development charges, we can't expect that, right? I'm just wondering how the numbers were, were formulated, were they formulated with development charges in mind, or was that a possibility later down the line? Because it's gonna be, as you said, the province wants houses, right? So.
So I, I, I may be misunderstood, no one's gonna build houses, is that what you're?
I mean, single-family, single-family houses will be probably le- less desirable from a profit standpoint, I imagine, for the builder, that's what they're telling me, and uh, right?
Um, I would dispute that to a certain degree. I think um, the majority of builders still prefer to build single-family dwellings, and um, and I believe that they could still make profit out of it. I, I think the requirements around density are gonna change this, the layouts of subdivisions, but I think when, there's still gonna be a significant portion of single-family dwellings. As Sally indicated, Mayor, your planning, there will be targets that Bill twenty-three will require as it relates to density requirements, so the developers are gonna have to meet those targets, but those targets have existed in other urban areas for many years already, and the developers are quite easily meeting those targets. I, I, I don't think this was, um, Bill twenty-three is gonna change the way growth looks, and the province is gonna look for ways to streamline the process and to reduce overall costs to developers, um, they've made that clear. But I do still believe the province acknowledges that services in particular, like water, sewer, are the responsibility of the developer.
Okay, Jeremy?
So looking at options two B, C, and D, um, we could conceivably get some of those cost per connection down for the existing users, or for future connec- connections on the existing capacity by using that eighteen, nineteen percent, as well as, you know, like you spoke earlier, maybe fire reserve or stuff like that as well. So we could cut into, you could cut into the costs for the current users and for the future connections of the existing capacity without affecting future connection costs. We wouldn't have to incrementally bring those down as well.
That's my belief, is that we could focus on the existing connections because they're the ones that have contributed to the.
They've paid that twenty percent. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Amanda?
Just a comment and a question for Bill. Um, so just, this is where I'm sort of struggling with this. Um, I think um, what's interesting about the legislation is if there is a section in the legislation, because it is an omnibus bill that talks about a particular region in the province, so York, where the province is compelling the region to uh pay for infrastructure. And so um, you know, the, the thought of, you know, having the developer pay for, for the growth is, you know, I think that's, you know, a good concept, but in um, in reality, there is hypothetically, we could get into a situation where we are compelled to, to make certain changes that could end up costing uh, costing us more. So I'm, I'm, I bring that forward for, for debate and discussion, for awareness that, you know, that is currently in the legislation. Um, for York region, obviously, that's a, you know, urban area, and, you know, obviously the province has very specific interests um in, you know, tackling those um more urban, urban areas, um, so there's some, you know, obviously more challenges. Um, and then my second question um is for Bill, it's just, you know, obviously, there is some options here that, that talk about fire, extra fire um protection, and so um, what is your um professional opinion on uh the risk if we were not to go with extra fire protection? Like, what's, you know, is there liability concerns? Like, what are, like, you know, just from your assessment, what are your, your thoughts on, on that? And again, I just want to make sure, like, I'm fully armed with all of the answers, um, because after tonight, like, you know, we have to live with whatever decision we come up with as a council.
Sure. Thanks, thanks for the question. Um, so the level of protection is established by council. So currently, uh Shakespeare is protected uh through water tanker shuttle. Um, if council chooses to uh implement an option that doesn't include hydrants, then that will, the current level would remain uh for Shakespeare. It's not, from a professional opinion, uh tanker shuttle is definitely not as effective as having a pressurized municipal fire system with fire hydrants. Um, no, no argument whatsoever there. Uh, but yeah, bottom line, the, the service level is set by council, so it would just remain what it is today.
Okay, other questions? Andrew?
I was gonna leave this until the question is on the floor, but maybe it's better in case staff wants to correct me or anything. So fire protection, great thing, it's um, I really, I really liked the uh, the report from BM Ross, it consistently says, it's a great line, it, it makes a lot of sense, it uh, it says current system does not support fire hydrants. That's, that's, that's a factual, perfect um, um, statement, it doesn't support fire hydrant, hydrants. Councilor Broadhagen's question kind of got to the, the root of the matter, which is, do we need fire hydrants? So I'm not an expert, not even close to even sit, standing near the shoes, let alone in the shoes of Chief Hunter, but um, you know, the, the Fire Act, not that I know, I've been working lately too much, I don't want to get into shoes, but um, so the Fire Act and Police, um, of Ontario, it clearly states that education and prevention, and there's a whole bunch of items that are secondary to suppression, right? Suppression is, is there, but it's, there's the top three, and I see Bill nodding his head, and that's just the way it works, you guys do a great job with, with all this stuff and stop the fire from happening. If we have a fire, it, it's not a failure, but it's a, a negative outcome like you would have seen in, say, Tavistock, when one house. in, say, Tavistock, when one house burned to the ground and there's a fire hydrant on the neighboring lawn, right? So it's not a guarantee of doing it. And if we're looking at, so if we equate that to the, kind of the third place of fire protection, and we equate the costs we're seeing, which I can't see, I don't have my glasses on, the higher costs. So we have something that, that's great, but may not be needed, and it's a higher cost. Again, Council Broadhagen had that we may be saddling ourselves with costs for the higher value system. You know, sure, we could have a splash pad in every corner and an ice cream stand, right? It's not going to help safety. But, you know, I think in the current economic climate, a frugal approach is probably best in this instance. So, so that was the thing is, the BM Ross reports actually state, the current system does not support fire hydrants. And if we're looking at that, and people have been looking at that saying, oh, we're, we're in trouble, right? We're not in trouble. We have a great fire department. I contacted my insurance after a lot of people said I should, a local mutual, which does very well. We get dividends. So I guess it's, it's a good company to be part of. And I will not get any increase in insurance, or decrease in insurance rate. They do it, they kind of described it like MDS. They put a pin in it, and everybody within eight kilometers gets that fabulous rate, right? So I'm not too worried, me personally, living in the area, that there's a concern about, about those two items. It seems that it would be nice to have maybe in 10 years, when I'm long gone, 10 years, that's not very long. That's, maybe some people wish it was sooner. But then maybe, you know, it might, it might be warranted, you know, to, to do that, the fire system. But I would, I would like to see us keep this frugal. And I think the fire component, although, is extremely valuable, and the opinions of our fire department are always valued. I think it's maybe a little bit too early for, for that cost, for the, for the benefit. So that's.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, if we have no questions, then we have some options. So we can go with two A. We have two scenarios for two B. We have four scenarios for two C, and four scenarios for two D. So who wants to move what? Hugh?
I would move two A only because I think that there's a lot there. It's very good. But I, again, as Council McAlpine said, don't want to really saddle the municipality at this time with a lot of extra costs. And secondly, the development charges and things like that, like a lot of that stuff is up in the air.
Let's get a move, a seconder before you give all your reasons, okay? So you're moving to A. Do we have a seconder? Andrew? Okay, now I'll go back to you, Hugh. Sorry.
Oh, no problem. No, I just think that it would be better not to be taking on very much debt at the moment. The economy is very bizarre. And I would not want us to see, take on extra money that we would have to service until a possible future time that we could maybe possibly recoup the money, which is not anymore guaranteed that we're going to get that money. That's all.
Okay, any else, anyone else want to make comments? Andrew?
You know, thank you, Mayor Aggett. So two A, if we look at the survey, we never really spent a lot of time on that. The first one, number one, Miller, which is off the table now, it looks like. It's the same cost, the same basic setup as two, two, or the first two ones. Sorry, this is such a new site. I'm a little, I'm a little trying to get familiar with it. So site one at Miller is the same as two A, which has been moved. Basically, same cost, same, same amenities. And it looks like arguably, well, not arguably, factually, that this, this event we put on in Shakespeare said, we want site number one. So this is the most similar thing to that. And I think that with the petition, with the two VAs that came out, all had the same, the same vein in it from the, the ratepayers in the area. And I think that that's probably the most reasonable, and adding the financial stipulation from Deputy Mayor McDermott, I think it's wise. It is expandable. So we're not stopping anything from happening. We're just going to trans, it sounds like we're just going to transfer that, that securely to the, the developers where it should be.
Anyone else with questions? Bob?
I heard Andrew say that it was, I guess, the majority that supported option one by the, so I guess, since it's a user pay system, I kind of filtered through the comments. And if they weren't connected to the system, I didn't really have any merit to those points because it's a user pay system. So I just filtered through those comments. And the majority were actually in favor of site two C or two D. I think that's summarized in the report as well. So again, just want to clarify that if you're going by a survey, or those who chose to attend, well aware that there was no mandate for any connection. And it is a user pay system, that those that commented chose not site one, not site two A or B, but seven and eight, or seven and three, I guess, made comments for C and D. Just to clarify.
Okay, anyone else with questions? Andrew?
If it's okay, I would like to respond to the comments about my, my, the question, comment about my comment. Is that okay? Or, or you'd like everybody else to go ahead?
Is there anyone else first? Jerry?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Aggett. Andrew made a comment about futures, the future connections. So option two A only provides for the 88 that are, that are within. I'm about growth. We need growth. It's, it's something we need. The province has said it. We've, we're doing it. We need the growth. So I can't support two A. It sounds like perhaps I could be swayed towards two B without the fire suppression, without the hydrants. But obviously, I don't live in Shakespeare. But if I lived in Shakespeare, I would want a fire hydrant. And with, with two D, that's the one that I would probably go with. But two B would be my preferred option. But I can't support two A.
Okay, anyone else with questions, comments? Then Andrew, I'll let you have the final one, and we're going to vote.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak again to this important thing. So we, we duly elected council, Mayor, sorry, Councilor McMillan offered this survey in this forum to get a poll of what the feeling on the, on the community was. Am I correct? Or that's what the intent was? We've got the results. I'm not sure how we, I didn't see that, how we can filter well owners, well owners unless they said they were. I guess it summarized it at the end. I'm not sure how they did that. Maybe by IP address, or there's another box on here, but.
One of these two comments.
On one of these ones, okay. So regardless, regardless, it is the survey. We can't discount something that we, we put in place, right? I, I won't discount it. It's the, it's the fourth time we went back and got the same answer. So that's, that's all I'm saying is, is the development thing is a different conversation to be had at a different time. We need to get the arsenic fixed. And if we can somehow, it looks like we're going to build something expandable with two A, let's keep the cost down and, and build two A.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and it says, the Council of the Township of Perth East, receive the report entitled Shakespeare Water EA Public Forum Open House Follow Up, dated January 10, 2023, prepared by the Chief Administrative Officer, Manager of Public Works and Parks, Treasurer and Operations Coordinator for Information, and that council approve, excuse me, option two A, as a preferred alternate, alternative and direct staff to proceed completion of the municipal class EA and design, and that council direct staff and project engineer to prepare a detailed costing, funding analysis for the preferred option, contemplating financial implications on benefiting properties and respective budgets. So now we're going to vote. All those in favor of two A. Those opposed? Defeated.
Recorded vote, please.
Okay. We'll go around the table. Councilor McAlpine?
Yea.
Councilor Matheson?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor McDermott?
Yea.
Counselor Smith?
Nay.
Counselor McMillan?
Nay.
Counselor Broadhaken?
Nay.
And Mayor Aggett's? Nay. Okay, so does someone else? Amanda?
Like to make a motion that we move option two C.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Do we have a seconder for that? Okay, seconded by Andrew. Okay, I'm not going to read the motion again. Is there any comments or questions? Jeremy?
Question to the mover. Two C versus two D. Just curious of, you know, why, why two C versus two D?
I think there isn't tons of difference between two, two C, two D. But I think it's the next best option in my view. And it still covers all, checks off all the boxes for me, just that, you know, keeping costs in mind. So that's why I'm moving that. But, you know, I'm open to the, the other option, option two D. But I think option two C is a good middle ground, and it still checks off all the boxes that, that I think, you know, that community needs.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'm not going to read it all again. But the option, I will read just part, that council approve option number two C as a preferred alternative and direct staff to proceed completion of the municipal class EA and design. So now we're voting on two C. All in favor of two C? Carried. Okay, so we're going with option two C. Thanks, everyone. I know it's been a contentious topic, and we thank everyone for their diligence and looking into this matter. So we will move on now to the clerk. And we're going to, we have a request for repair and improvement. I think Eric, Eric is going to join us. There he is. Eric, good to see you. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Just making sure that council can hear me. Perfect. So yeah, this report is for a section 78 request, which we received by Scott Campbell for the western municipal drain. He's a property owner on lot 37 concession six in northeast Hope Ward. He's just simply looking to increase and modern, sorry, improve and modernize the western municipal drain, specifically a branch that jets into the Stratford Municipal Airport. So we are just recommending that we go ahead with the next step in the process, which is notifying the Conservation Authority and then bringing it back to council.
Okay, questions for Eric? Seeing no questions. We do have a motion at the Council of the Township of Perth East, receive the request for repair and improvement, section 78 of the Drainage Act by property owner Scott Campbell for the western municipal drain, lot 37 concession six, northeast Hope Ward Township of Perth East for information, and that in accordance with section 78, in brackets two of the Drainage Act, the appointment of an engineer will be considered at the February 7, 2023, regular council meeting, subsequent to the notice advising of the proposed drainage works being sent to the Secretary Treasurer of the Conservation Authority that has jurisdiction over the lands in the affected area. We need a mover and a seconder, moved by Bob, seconded by Jerry. Comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Eric. And then we're going to move to the appointment of the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority and Assable Bayfield Maitland Source Protection Committee. And Ashley, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Aggett. The only comments I have for the report is that the other members for the Assable Bayfield Maitland Valley Source Protection Committee, so the East Group, everyone else has approved. Alan Rothwell is the representative. And then the second part, Maitland Valley Conservation Authority, that's joint with West Perth, and West Perth has appointed Andrew Fournier.
Okay, questions of the report? Seeing no questions. We have a motion at the Council of the Township of Perth East, receive the appointment to the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority and Assable Bayfield Maitland Valley Source Protection Committee report, prepared by the municipal clerk, dated January 10, 2023, for information, and that council supports the recommendation of Alan Rothwell for the Assable Bayfield Maitland Valley Source Protection Committee for the 2022 to 2026 term of council, and that council supports the recommendation of Andrew Fournier to the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority for the 22, 2026 term of council. A mover and a seconder, moved by Jeremy, seconded by Hugh. Comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to the finance and Sebringville Athletic Association. And Paula, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Aggett. Tonight, council has before them a request from the Sebringville Athletic Association to modify the projects that were originally approved under their 2019 grant received from council. The three original projects were tree removals, repairs to the pavilion roof, as well as playground replacement. When they went out for RFPs on the playground equipment, costing was higher than what they had thought. So they need to fundraise further in order to replace the full playground. Then COVID hit, everything shut down, usage changed. Now priorities have shifted, and the group is requesting to change the projects. They have completed the tree removal and the pavilion roof repair. It's that playground piece that they're asking to expand upon. And they're proposing a partial playground equipment replacement to extend the life of that equipment, as well as drainage repairs and fencing and turf repairs.
Thanks. Questions of the report? Do you know the drainage that they're going to do? Are they trying to fix something? Or are they looking to put in a municipal drain? Do you know?
I actually reached out to Ken Wolf, the member on the Sebringville Athletic Association, for further clarification on the drainage work. And I have not heard back from him. And just for council's note, I did offer for them to be a delegation at this meeting, and I still haven't heard back from them. So.
Okay, Amanda?
Can we defer this until we get more information?
We could defer, yes, if that's what council wishes.
I'll move that.
Okay. So Amanda's moved to defer. Do we have a seconder? Hugh? Okay, so I'll read, the Council of Township of Perth East, receive the report dated January 20th, or excuse me, January 10, 2023, entitled Sebringville Athletic Association, Inc., request to amend 2019 grant project prepared by the treasurer for information, and that this report be deferred until further information received.
Just to clarify, what information is it that you're all wanting more on? Just the drainage? Just drainage?
Okay, any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, then we're going to, we have nothing for public works, nothing for building and bylaw. The next we have is recreation and community services pre-budget approval perk. Becky, floor is yours.
Thanks, Mayor Rhonda. As some council members will recall, that we had a roof inspection completed in 2022. We did do some immediate repairs in 2022. But I did let council know at the time that there was going to be a need of replacements in some of the roof areas. That's shown in the, the report. The estimated cost of the roof repairs is $385,000. There's another reserves that we could take that from. The reason why it's coming as a pre-budget approval is, right now, if we can get the tenders out early, we can get better pricing, because the contractors are wanting to get projects on their books. because the contractors are wanting to get projects on their books and in the budget process would miss that opportunity. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Okay, questions of the report? Jerry?
So you've got the total amount there. Thanks, Mayor Eggers. It's just a matter of, and you have a space there for the amount, so I presume. Right, in the recommendation, there's no number there. I presume we would do the full 385. It's just a matter of where we're taking the monies from.
Correct.
So we've only had, we only have 890 in the arena capital, so we don't really want to deplete that, so. Yeah, I'm in favor of getting this done, just whatever my other council members wish to take the money from or maybe a recommendation from the treasurer would help.
It is Jerry in the report from the building betterment, right? Okay. So who wants to move what? Andrew, you have a question or you want to make?
No, just a quick question. So do we put asset management? As we're taking asset management, I'm not sure how much is building cost here. I'm thinking like 90,000 bucks or something. Is it going into building betterment? Or where does asset management money go in for the bits and pieces along the way? As it was described to me by the previous treasurer. Does it go into that fund or where does that end up?
No, I was just pulling up the reserve explanations so I can quickly go through. The building betterment is for corporate asset acquisition, replacement, and rehabilitation. And that is a TCA class reserve discretionary. So TCA is a tangible capital asset, which is part of the asset management plan. And I'm just looking to see if there's any. The corporate reserve, which was, is another option, that is to fund capital projects or corporate deficits. And that's a TCA as well, a TCA class discretionary.
So, sorry, Treasurer Michael. So the asset management contributions per year are going where? And can we use those for this project?
There is an asset. I'm just getting to the asset.
So I'm clear. You're asking if we can use the asset management money?
Yeah, previously there was a discussion about that and I was, the statement, I remember clearly was it's for, we were thinking of not including that building in that, in that, that, that procedure. And in the response that I got and it stuck with me is that it's for the bits and pieces along the way, which would hopefully would include the roof on the building, right? So that's why I'm asking that maybe we have this other money that we can also, is available. But I, it may, regulation may have changed. I don't think our policy has, but.
There, so Counselor McAlpine, there is the corporate asset reserve and that's where the capital transfers for the asset management plan are going currently. And the current balance in there budgeted to end 2022, 161,000, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? And who wants to make what motion here? Jeremy?
The recommendation says to come from the building betterment reserve, so I'll move that.
And the dollar amount?
The 385.
385, okay. And Amanda will second that? So the motion is that the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the pre-budget approval perk roof replacement report, prepared by the Recreation and Community Services Manager, dated January 10, 2023, for information, and that Council approves. 385,000 for the perk roof replacement project be included in the 2023 Perth East capital budget and the project be funded from the better, building betterment reserves. Okay, any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Becky. So we have no reports from fire. The next is our correspondence from John Kastner from the museum. Do you wish to receive his report for information? Okay, moved by Hugh, second by Bob. Any more comments or questions? Ashley?
So we'll forward this letter on to the Brockston School Committee as well, so they're aware that he hasn't received this yet. He didn't address the letter to them at all. It was just to myself and council. So unless council wants anything else done with that correspondence.
Maybe I better read that out. Do I? It's good, okay. All in favor? Carried. Okay, then we move to committee reports and my meeting log is there for where I was for the month of December. Any questions on any of that? If not, do we have any council reports? Amanda?
Last night, we had our first joint fire committee meeting in Sebringville. And yeah, it was, it was great and more to come on that. We set our schedule for the year and so our next meeting, I believe, is April the 7th.
Okay, anyone else? Jerry?
Well, from the county, I attended my first Spruce Lodge meeting. I'm on that committee and that was more of an orientation, getting up to speed on the lodge. So I'm looking forward to that the coming year. Just as a note, perhaps, they are using a lot of agency people. So just to be aware that the, that cost was quite large for the, for the last couple of years. So I know the amount that we see in their proposed budget. They might be coming back a little bit more, so just be aware of that one. But yeah, looking forward to this Spruce Lodge.
Okay, any other announcements? If not, we need a motion to accept the meeting log and Jerry's report. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay. Sorry, no bylaws. We do not have a closed session. We have two notice of motions. So the first motion, notice of motion is, got the right one? Okay, regarding Resolution 22-292, that Council of the Township of Perth East direct staff to hold a public forum regarding Shakespeare Water. And the notice of motion is that the Council of the Township of Perth East direct staff to report to, back to council on the following items related to Resolution 22-292, public forum held December 13, 2022, Spruce Dale School Shakespeare. Number one, the supporting background policy and authority to initiate the public poll taken on December 13, 2022, paper copy and electronic poll appearing on Perth East website, including reasoning as to why established survey type model was not used. Number two, background policy and authority to display information at the forum outside of the related BM Ros presentation available on the Perth East website. Number three, measures that have been taken or will be taken to ensure the integrity and accuracy of paper and online poll submissions, including summaries. Number four, make available in whatever manner applicable the raw data of the paper and online poll results to council. And number five, background policy and authority to destroy data after summary as stated on publicly circulated poll documents. So do we have a mover and a seconder?
Andrew's.
Moved by Andrew, second by Hugh. Comments or questions? Andrew?
Yes, no. Thank you for reading that off, Mayor Eggers. A couple of these items have actually been clarified a little bit tonight. Just for clarity on why I asked for four and five, most of these items, if not all of them, are some semblance of the questions I received from people during and after the public meeting. So I tried to make, make them make sense and summarize, summarize their comments and put them in front of us to get, to try and get the answers. Number four and five were resulting actually from a, a conversation with the Ministry of Environment and I'm not sure of our situation. They say that, yeah, councils typically run, run the EA process within kind of loose boundaries. So they had said to me that when I questioned them on behalf of the ratepayers, that, you know, that one of the tenants of an EA process is, is data retention, right? So that's why that one landed on here. The data, sorry, the comments is a big part of the EA. So clarity on why, because that was a bit of a surprise, I think, to see that walking in, that the sheet and on the, for the people that weren't there, there was a table with the sheets on it and it said it's gonna take, we saw the copy on the thing and the verbiage in it. So that's why that was on there. The integrity, I'm not sure what measures they used, but at this point, I guess it doesn't really matter. We're not taking into account the survey anyway. Background policy and authority, in my opinion, was to be council, makes the decisions and that's why I put the, the resolution in there. It didn't say anything about the, the online thing, which was good to give people a refresher, get warmed up. There's a lot of extra information that was on the storyboards. I think it made it a little more confusing. That's what I saw and that's what I was told, that people weren't sure what they were looking at because they had already read. So I was wondering to know why that would, why that changed and how it changed. And then the only place I can find were a poll being taken, and this again was overlapping with my conversation with the Ministry of Environment, is that it would be a question on a ballot at an election time that we would take a poll like this. And, and that's kind of one of the areas where it jumps out in a municipal perspective. Again, this is, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just it wasn't really not normal, expected from the comments I heard when I inquired, so. And having said all that, I think most of these are now mute, so I am going to withdraw it.
Okay. All right, so the motion is withdrawn. Okay, then we'll move on to the second notice of motion and it's regarding Resolution 21-158. Received for information, refer to Perth County Planning Department. Attacks, attached background information to a company notice of motion for reference. Number one, copy of Resolution 21-158. And number two, correspondence from Samuel Head Consultant Avon River Estate Expansion Plans Agenda Item 9.1, May 4, 2021, regular meeting of council. And the notice of motion is that the Council of Perth East direct staff to follow up and report back to council with information related to Resolution 21-158 from all sources, including County of Perth Planning Department. So Andrew moves. Do we have a seconder? Hugh, any questions or comments? Jerry?
So just a little confused on this. So this was a notice of motion to bring information forward, yet it did get brought forward before we even approved the motion, right? We're looking at some of those things. So staff did bring them forward before? Is that not what we see here on page 201, 202? All that information that has been requested from this motion is basically here. Unless, unless I'm wrong. Am I wrong in reading into this? Someone help me out?
Andrew?
Thank you, Counselor Smith. So I requested the clerk put that on there so everybody would have a frame of reference about the correspondence I was talking about. That's the actual correspondence. My question is, is, and, and that this is, I believe, that this is related to the shift from arsenic to expansion. And that's great, but I just, I cannot find any reference of where this went other than the resolution we had and where it came back. So this may take a little bit of effort, maybe council knows what, or sorry, staff knows what happened. They can just say now, but, and, and don't have to take any time to look it up. But it didn't land in the county that I can see in any of their documents at council. So I don't know where it went. And I believe it's part of the water discussion that's going on because it was specifically asking for, if you read it, especially the last few pages, water capacity for expansion in Shakespeare. And it happened directly after the, the April 7th EA, ESR final report. So I'm just trying to connect all the dots so you get a full completion of, of the process of how we got where we are. I realize it's a ways back. I personally didn't see this for a year after it, but this, this file is still current. So I'd like to know if we can get some feedback on where this went, what happened and what the results were.
So my recollection is that we received it for information. We forwarded it to the planning department. It would not appear on County Council's agenda because we didn't send it to County Council. We sent it to the planner to look at this information when they did the official plan. So I'm thinking that they still have this information and they're, when they're working on the official plan, they're using the, the information that was sent in to them to, to figure out what they're going to do with the official plan. Am I correct? Ashley?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, that's where it's at right now. They're waiting for the official plan to be reviewed and approved and this falls into that group, the official plan amendment.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm asking because it's directly asking for extra water capacity over and above the one we have now. So just so council knows that that's why I'm asking about this is, this, this is a part of this. I just didn't see any response and nothing went to county. So it's in the county, is it okay at council's discretion, the mayor's discretion, that I contact Planner McMillan and ask the status of it? Or do we want to do that officially as a group?
That's entirely up to you. That's not up to, to council.
Oh, okay. I'll phone her and ask her then, save us some work.
Throughout the official plan updating process, there's been an open commenting period for anyone. And so this would have been treated in that manner as well. So yeah, there's absolutely, yeah, you can certainly contact Sally about the status of the official plan and about where this went and I think that would be her response. But maybe in that assumption, but I don't know. It was, as our clerk has described and the mayor described, it was forward to County Planning based on direction from council at the time and when it was first received.
No, I appreciate the comments. I'll, I'll see what they have to say. I know I was not included in the stakeholder groups, but I was paying attention to the process. So I don't know exactly who sat in on those developer stakeholder groups, but I can, I can inquire and save us some work.
Okay, so you want the motion to stay then? Is that correct?
I'll withdraw. I'll withdraw.
You withdraw?
Save us some time.
Okay, it will be withdrawn as well. Okay, do we have any new business? Oh, right, okay. The Council of the Township of Perth East received a presentation from Laura Hallahan, Perth East Public Library Board Chair, and Mark Steffen, Perth East Public Library Board Vice Chair. Presentation of the library organizational review for information. Mover and a seconder. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Any other new business? Any announcements? Any confirmative, oh, there is a confirmatory bylaw. So the bylaw number 23-001 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Township of Perth East at its regular meeting held on January 10, 2023, be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. An adjournment that we adjourn at 9:04. Moved by Amanda, second by Andrew. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. It's good to see you.